Okay, so we're going to continue the Town of Bristol Select Board meeting for March 6, 2023. It is now 6:32, and we're going to move to item five on our agenda, which is the Annual Police District Meeting Public Information Meeting. So we have Chief Nathan present here at Holly Hall, and this is to discuss the police district budget or anything else about the police district that people wish to talk about. I know we have a couple of audience members for this meeting, and I'm sure we have a couple of people online as well. I know that people who are on Zoom, to remind folks that are on Zoom, won't be able to vote on any of the articles this evening after this meeting at 7 o'clock, but you are very welcome to ask questions in the chat that we can relay to people here. I don't know if you want to speak at all, Bruce, with regard to? I don't think so.
All right. Well, thank you for those that are attending, and if anybody's got any questions, I'm certainly open to questions. But just a little bit about the police department, for those that might not know, we currently have four full-time positions, police officer positions. I fill one of them, Sergeant Andrew Graham, and Officer Francis Smith fills two more, and we have one vacant position. So if you know anybody that's certified, we're looking for a police officer. We have some part-time officers that help us out with covering some shifts, Matthew Collins, Michael Major, Matthew Tatro, who happens to be the music teacher at Mount Abe, and Logan Young. And we have Liz Tracy as a part-time admin assistant, who pretty much keeps me in line. We migrated to a new database at the end of 2021, and we continue to learn the features available with that. During 2022, we completed 3,795 calls for service. More and more people are taking advantage of our unused medication drug disposal box in our lobby. In 2022, I think we collected over 100 pounds of unused medication. We've seen an increase in fingerprint requests. For those that don't know, we do complete requests. There's no appointment necessary. It's best to stop between 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM or after 3:30. And remember to bring the required forms with two forms of ID. If you do not live in the police district, which was the former village, there's a $30 fee cash or check. Now that people are taking vacations, again, we also check on property when you're out of the area. Porter Knight presents Bristol Social Justice Discussions. They're informative, they're very beneficial, and please take time to join the discussion if you haven't already. You can get more information about those on the Lawrence Memorial Library's website. We continue to seek message suggestions for our radar signs, those friendly little flashing messages when you're coming into town. It's a good reminder for people when you're entering the 30 that you're entering a 30-mile-an-hour zone. You may have noticed our newest police vehicle is a 2022 Charger. A reminder that we have a tablet provided by Turning Point Center of Addison County. We are able to provide FaceTime communication for persons in need 24 hours a day. Turning Point Center provides peer-based recovery support to all. And just as a personal note, I'm one of the members on the Board of Directors for Turning Point. It's a great organization. You can check out their website if you want to know more about them. So there obviously has been an increase in our budget. Most of the increase was due to salaries negotiated during this fiscal year to include increases for this fiscal year and next year's fiscal year. So if anybody's got any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer.
If you have a question, please use the microphones just so we can capture it for the recording and the live broadcast, and state your name, please.
At John Moyers on Main Street. First off, personally, I feel very well-served by the Bristol Police. I think the chief's doing a great job. So with that said, I still think we have to figure out how we fund the police in Bristol. I hope the Select Board will put that out there for discussion, debate. Do you have any idea how many man-hours are worked in a year? I mean, do you budget by, like, do you guesstimate man-hours regular and overtime and then budget that way? I'm just trying to, how many man-hours are in a year, regular and overtime? That'd be something I'd like to see. I'm curious, the reason I'm asking is I'm curious about what the cost of just standing up the force is. You know, if you just do a rough math of regular and overtime hours divided by hours, you know, you get a sense of what it costs us in the whole pie. So I'm interested in that number.
We do have in the budget the salary, which covers us for being there, and then what we've spent in overtime. So I guess if we added that together, or if you looked at that section of the budget?
I'd need your help with that. But I'd love to figure that out, just as a rough metric for thinking about how we, this leads to my next question, how, I think the budget is $10,000 from the town for contribution for out-of-district calls, is that right this year?
We increased that.
It is up this year.
It's up.
How do you calculate that number? How do you sort of put a cost to that?
We go and we review the calls for service from the year before, and then we estimate if it's been increasing that we'll probably go to more. And currently, it was, we're figuring at $65 per call, but that looks like it'll go up to at least 75. And that's usually because most calls are less than an hour of our time. If it does go beyond an hour, we add additional to that.
Is that how you calculate the Mount Abe estimate, too?
The Mount Abe is similar, yes.
When you're budgeting, just to have a sort of hourly cost or per-call cost?
It's kind of a combination of both, yes.
The reason I am asking these questions is I hope if we can get these numbers in place, we can look at, you know, I think, my personal opinion is the police district is vastly undercharging the town. My guesstimate is cost $250, $350 an hour to stand at the police force when you take the whole budget and divide it by the man-hours asked. I'd love to be corrected on that, to be real, but if it's something in that neighborhood, then we're vastly undercharging out-of-district calls, and we should look at that. But that's the basis of all those questions. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from anyone in the audience?
Ian.
Oh, Peaker. Let's see, how do we get?
If Bruce gets called, or if the PD gets called out for emergency service.
Peaker, hold on one sec.
Yeah.
We're going to see if we can connect you in. We're going to bring you live into this room.
Yeah.
John's going to get a cable.
Can you hear me?
Well, maybe.
Maybe?
Oh, here we go.
Maybe.
We can hear you. You're in the room with us now.
Perfect. I think we should point out, John, that the money that's charged to the town for police coverage is scheduled service. If PD gets called out for something special, that's charged on a per-call basis, I believe. Is that correct, Bruce?
That's correct.
I just wanted to clarify for John, that's all.
I muted, Peaker. Okay. Oh, but I'm still, I got it. Yep, I got it. Okay, thank you very much, Peaker. Any other questions? No, John?
This is not for the chief, but for the board. When can we have that conversation about how the district is funded? You know, right now, we have the police district carrying 90-plus percent of the cost of the police in town. So that doesn't seem equitable to me, and, you know, I think we ought to have that conversation. So any idea when we can talk about that?
Ask community?
Well, I mean, we have had discussions before. There was a committee that was set up to discuss the idea of expanding the police district to be town-wide, and that, there were a few complications with that, and I think we didn't get the information that we wanted to out of that particular committee. So I think we're open to other ideas, and I don't know in terms of a discussion like that, Val. Right, what the, I mean, as a taxpayer, you're welcome to sort of submit and put yourself on the agenda and have that discussion with us and bring it officially to a meeting and talk to us about that, and I think that might be the easiest place to start. I don't know if you're willing to do that, or if you're looking for something else in terms of more detail. I mean, so there are figures that you asked for this evening of the chief. If you get those numbers?
I think that would inform a conversation that we could have, certainly. I would look to the police commissioners, Select Board, to lead that conversation. You know, we can come up with sort of a fact sheet that puts everybody on the same page informationally, you know, where money comes from, where money goes, and that sort of thing. I think the chief has been terrific, open book. I think, I feel really good about the transparency of the department and all that, so it's not really about the department, it's really just how we pay for it.
Okay.
So I think that's a conversation for our political leaders.
Well, John, I've been around a while, and I've served on three of those committees. Last one, you were on and didn't go well. I just, I don't, I think it really needs to come from the townspeople more, you know, if they're not getting the service from the VSP that they deserve, and they can, you know, I think it needs to come from them more. You know, we've led, tried it three times, and to me, my head is hurting, my head against the wall.
Right. I grant you that. I don't think that the focus of those efforts were specifically on the funding, although that was part of the bigger picture. I'd like to talk specifically about the funding in the future, but I get what you're saying, yeah.
So we have a question in chat from Clove Havia, and they say, "This is, for the town as well as for the police budget, why are revenues proposed to be more than they have been in the previous two years? This is true for most of the listed revenue rows." Right, and for this particular meeting, we will talk about the police budget. I don't know if, Bruce, you have a response for that?
As our costs, excuse me, as our costs go up, we're asking for more revenue from the, for the services that we provide to not only the town, but to Mount Abe as well. Yes, and then with the fourth position, when we fill that, there is grant funding for that to help offset the cost.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience or out in Zoom land? Please remember to state your name.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay on the mic? All right. Hello, my name is Brett LaRose. I think I have two questions and a comment. My first question to the board is, does the Town of Bristol Select Board have the authority to just say, "We are, we're going to be a town-wide police department"? Do you have that authority? You do not.
I do not believe that, Brett, because the '92 or '93 merger document specifically says there'll be a public vote, district vote, to expand the police department.
Okay, thanks.
It's a combination.
Right.
District vote to expand and?
And, well, it's disbanded.
Disband.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So you have the disband of authorities.
Okay. And then my next question, kind of a follow-up to Mr. Moyers, that your comments about, you know, residents who live outside the town and Vermont State Police, you know, and convincing them, and there hasn't been great participation. It's, you know, it's very easy to sit back and say, "I will just call VSP." You know, it's, nobody knows how much you need a service until the day you need it. It's kind of like the fire department, you know? Why do you, does anybody want to pay for a fire department until the day they actually need them? But have we, as a town, come, just, just put it to a vote? Just put it to the town, everybody? Do you want to go town-wide or not? Just to gauge where we are as a community, as a town?
I think that's the direction we're probably going to go in. Yeah.
It just seems like that question should be answered sooner than later, before we put together more special committees and working groups. Let's ask the town, what do they want?
Yes. Yeah, I agree with that.
Before we waste any more of Bruce's time, or anybody else's for that matter.
Right.
So, and then my comment is, I just would like to commend Bruce, Chief Nathan, and his team. It's, I think they do an outstanding job. As a taxpayer here in Bristol, it's certainly comforting to someone who's out all hours of the night, whether it be on an emergency or just walking my dog. It's very comforting to see the cruisers drive by, so, and for somebody who's not afraid of much, I'm sure those people are more afraid, really appreciate that. So thank you, Bruce. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question on chat from Jessica Teetz. "I was curious as to why the costs for the dog services are so high, $7,000. Is there a plan to reduce these costs, like maybe finding dog owners and having them pay for services used?" Thank you.
The reason the increase for the dog services, we spend a lot of time on dog complaints, and I would much rather somebody else handle that, but I don't think you're going to find someone that's willing to even work part-time for that amount of money to handle the dog complaints. So if there is a better way to charge for that service, I'm open for suggestions.
Thank you.
Jessica Hinden. And to Bruce's comment, if you look in the town report, there's no dog warden anymore. We've turned that over to the police department, because they were getting all the complaints anyway, and the dog warden was busy, couldn't get to him, so the board, working with Bruce, and, yeah, they've decided, or we decided with Bruce's help in the police department, that they'll take care of the dog issues for us. And it can be very, yeah. One of the things I never thought in the years I've been on the board, we deal with dog issues like we have been.
All right. Any other questions from the audience in terms of the police district?
Hi, my name is Beth Eggers, and I think I'm just looking for some clarification. I live out in the town, excuse me, not the village, and I'm wondering, so are we still paying taxes for the police, even though we're not, whenever we call, we get the state police? And if so, what's the percentage that someone outside of the village would pay? For example, you know, on $100,000, what would you pay if we are doing, in fact, doing it, or we're not paying taxes at all on that, on the police?
Outside of the district, it's a very, very small percentage. The police department charges a certain amount for out-of-district service each year, so you pay a very small percentage. The majority, I don't know what it is.
So is it based on per need, or is it based on taxes?
Right, it's sort of previous to the discussion that John Moyers had in terms of the, how that number is calculated. It's just the amount of calls that come each year, and then the chief works within his department to sort of figure out what that dollar amount might be.
So, John, were you asking, what's the percentage of, what's the percentage that the people outside of the village pay?
I think that's calculated in the budget. Right, there's a number this year, which I appreciate.
Do you remember what it is, Bruce? Just out of curiosity.
So it's?
$30,000.
Right.
$30,000.
Well, no.
Non-district services.
No, 19.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so there, 19,000, which is essentially, it's called the Town Traffic Patrol Contract, and so as an out-of-district resident, you're paying?
19,000 per hundred?
No, that's the entire budget. So it's split between all taxpayers. So it's a very, very small percentage of your taxes in terms of paying for that.
It does sound very small. Thank you, thank you very much.
Oh, true, that's right, yes.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
So for the town service, we do traffic patrol, which I believe that's the 19,000, and then there's funds set aside for out-of-district calls. It doesn't mean that the Bristol Police respond to every person who calls outside of the police district. That's for more serious events or to assist the state police. If it's a minor incident, we're going to tell you to contact the state police and wait until they have time to get to you. So it's not every call.
Does that answer your question, Beth?
I guess, Beth, what the chief is saying, that if someone calls from your area or anywhere in the town area outside the district, and the state police have got two officers on in the middle of Saturday night, and they're both in Orwell, and they need police assistance now in Meann Road or wherever in the Bristol, they'll say, "Bristol PD, can you handle that till we come"? That is, that's a call for service then, and then Bruce bills that to the town for that service. But the 19,000 covers routine patrols, doing some radar on the roads and stuff of that nature.
How many people that 19,000 covers?
He can run radar most, or traffic control anywhere in town, that covers that. It might be on your Lorinoch Road, might be upper Meann, Lorin Meann, Burpee.
So I really can't, I really don't know what to expect, what part of it, and how much of that is, to kind of estimate would be my responsibility in a tax year.
Well, I believe in the Treasury, please, correct me if I'm wrong, one cent on the tax rate in the Bristol town generates about $72,000.
Okay.
So if you think of 19,000, it's about a quarter of a cent on your tax rate.
Or 30,000.
Or 30,000, so it's about a half a cent on your tax rate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the police district? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I think we will wrap this meeting up and proceed to our next meeting, and we'll go onstage. I think we'll adjourn the Town of Bristol Select Board meeting and the Annual Police District Meeting Public Information Meeting.
I love this town. I'm Jennifer Wagner, and I am your new moderator. Fred Baser left some mighty big shoes to fill, but I've been preparing, and so I hope I'm going to serve you well tonight. We're going to begin with our traditional talk from our local legislators. We have Senator Bray here tonight and Representative Elder. They are not residents of this town, so as a point of business, I ask that the Assembly give them permission to speak, or shall I say, if there is no objection, we'll hear from our legislators. Not hearing any objection. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris Bray, and it's great to be in my hometown, so Bristol. I live on North Street, and I've been coming to town meetings here for years, but I only moved to Bristol, I think, three years ago. So instead of like a full, broad legislative report, I just very, I want to do a deep dive on one issue that's come up, and that is, I chaired the Natural Resources and Energy Committee in the Senate, and we put out a bill this year called the Affordable Heat Act, also known by its bill number S5, and there's two reasons we did that. One, we passed a law in Vermont that said, "We recognize that when we burn fossil fuels, we send pollution up in the air, that includes CO2. That is the primary driver." The simple physics of climate change is CO2 makes for climate change. We recognize that it's not a sustainable way to behave. We're causing widespread damage when we do that, so let's stop doing that. Well, how are we going to stop doing it? That's the challenge that we face. But that law says that we, I'm a lawmaker, I'm also a law follower, so when I take the oath of office in January, it means that I'm obligated to do my best to follow the laws of the state of Vermont, one of which is reduce pollution from burning fossil fuels. So we've made our best faith effort to do exactly that. The other thing is, we are simultaneously facing, I'd say, a heating emergency, and what do I mean by that? Everyone is very aware of the price in fossil fuel, the price spike in fossil fuels over last year and this year. The total increased cost that we're facing as a state is roughly $650 to $700 million more to heat now than two years prior. So no one asked us, "Are you ready for this? Do you have that money in your wallets? Are you all set to go?". And there are a lot of people who are anxious because of the kind of cost they're facing, and it's been a problem for many households. So between record-high prices and a law that says we need to do something to reduce pollution, the Affordable Heat Act is our response as a legislature. In essence, it is a way to help fund over the long haul from here through 2050, so it is a gradual change over time, to cleaner ways to heat our homes, as well as to reduce the amount of heat that we need. So reduce the amount of heat we need, that's through things we already know well, things like weatherization. Reduce the amount of fossil fuels we burn, that's through things like electrically-powered cold-climate heat pumps, heat pump hot-water heaters, but it also includes wood stoves, it also includes solar hot water. There are about 12 different things that are all supported by the program. So we don't pick technology winners and losers. We know every household is an individual household. People will look at these programs for themselves and see which things make sense for them. So those programs are supported, they would begin in 2026. I was at Legislative Breakfast just a week ago today down at the VFW, and I heard a lot of people who were very upset and nervous about what this bill was going to do to them. I'll just say, there was a lot of information getting circulated that I'm sad to say, I'd say was misleading or misinformation, so, but when I left, you know, I learned at least two things. One was that people were worried. They said, "You know, I would like to clean up the way I heat, reduce emissions, you know, no one's interested in polluting on purpose, but I'm concerned about the cost." The bill as originally written had a two-year development phase, a plan was presented, and that legislature was going to have a full legislative session to look at it and make a decision. People said, "Well, but it's a little bit on autopilot, isn't it? If you don't stop it, it will become law." And I said, "That is correct." So when I went back to Montpelier after that meeting with so many people concerned, we changed the bill. So I heard concerns, I listened, and I went back and made the change. And that changes, that bill, that plan will now come to a full stop, and the next legislature then legally must pass a bill in order to throw the switch and turn that program on. So there's no autopilot in it anymore. It is a, there'll be a great deal of information developed in the planning phase, so we can answer the questions that people have, entirely valid questions. What will it mean to me? What will it cost me? We'll be able to answer those questions. That next legislature will evaluate whether or not it makes sense to move forward. And again, it goes through a full vote, House, Senate, and off to the governor. The other quick thing is, just two of the major things I think that are circulating that are misimpressions of the bill, it doesn't, as customers, you're not required to participate at all. There is no requirement to participate. It's an opportunity to participate, and if you see something in it that makes sense to you, for you and your family or your business, then you can look into it, sign up, and find out, maybe a heat pump is a good idea, maybe not, but there's opportunities to sign up, but no one is going to. But there's opportunities to sign up, but no one is compelled to participate. It's very much like efficiency Vermont, which is the underlying model. Efficiency Vermont doesn't force you to sign up for things. It can come and help you do things. Energy audits, light bulbs, compressors, motors, efficiency, that's their specialty. Participation there is voluntary. Participation in the Affordable Heat Act has always been, and the plan is to keep it voluntary. The second thing is, it does not prohibit the sale of any type of fuel. If you're burning number-two fuel now, you could continue to burn it. No fuels are off the table because of this bill. So I'll, I'll just, and I think those two things, I think I've heard from people. So if you had a boiler, you could continue to put number-two in it. There's also provisions to develop biofuels, and you could switch to them because they are, there are lower emissions with biofuels. So I'll just pause there, and one, that last thing, I want to come back to that, the numbers that I think are so compelling. $650 million more that we spent without ever being asked, did we want to spend that? To me, that seems like failing to act is leaving us all in a vulnerable position. Vermont is, you know, I think we have a way of wanting to figure things out, often for ourselves. A cleaner, localized energy economy is one way of disentangling us from a global oil market that really has no interest in our best interests whatsoever. So thank you for giving me the time to talk to you a little bit about it. Thanks for those who turned out a week ago and expressed their concerns. Democracy, I would say, is working. I heard them. I took them back to Montpelier. We changed the bill, and two years hence, we'll have a very solid plane to look at. That next legislature will have a chance to vote it forward or not, and I hope that when we've done all that additional analysis and planning, that we determine it is a powerful tool that we can use from here through 2050 to make a gradual transition to cleaner ways of heating our homes. So thanks so much.
Thanks, everyone. My name's Caleb Elder. I am one of the two representatives from this Addison IV District with Bristol, Lincoln, Moncton, and Starksboro, along with Mari Cordas. I did bring a kind of a two- or three-pager report, which I put back behind the cookies there next to the door, and happy to help you find that if you want to, but it's got just sort of some paragraph summations of some of the major legislation we're trying to move forward this session. Some highlights just from my own work, I am on a new committee this year, which is the House General and Housing Committee, which kind of is a lot of miscellaneous topics, and then housing. And of course, housing is a major priority. And so that will, you know, we did work on the Family Medical Leave Insurance Bill in the first month of the session, which is very important to me, and I think some manner of family medical leave insurance, to actually pay people while they're using their family medical leave, this guaranteed by the federal government, I think is going to happen, whether it's from the administration or from the bill that the legislature is advancing. But having done that, I think we'll be working on housing again, and the Senate has a really promising bill, which is, as so often is true in Montpelier, we see bills that are another go-around of something we've seen before, and this is a kind of example of a kind of grand bargain around development laws, right? And Act 250 exemptions for downtown areas, not to overgeneralize, but I think that's kind of one half of the bargain, and land use protections, on the other hand. You know, I think it's always notable when our, the Scott administration, Republican administration is feeling good about a bill when it comes out of a House committee, and coming out of Senator Rahm Hinsdale's Housing Committee, I think there is that kind of optimism from the administration. So I, you know, it's got a long road to go. I'm sure it'll go through Chris's committee and then come over to the House, but I think that kind of, that kind of bill is important right now. We're also needing to do a lot of economic development around housing and other things, but just getting some zoning reforms to allow for some greater density in some of our existing downtowns is needed, and could be good for a village like Bristol, I think, and for the surrounding area. There's a big childcare bill going on, which is interesting and is, I think, challenging to all parties, I would say. It's a big undertaking. It's a lot of new money. It's definitely trying to shore up our sort of public-private childcare mixed-delivery system. At the same time, I think some people in that mixed-delivery system feel threatened by the expanded full-year program for four-year-olds that would happen entirely within the public schools. So this is, this is a real shift, and there is a real tension point where kind of our childcare leaves off, which is just full of, you know, our most wonderful early educators, and goes into the public school, and there's this sort of challenge there, you know? But we know that it's so hard to find spots for our kids when they're, you know, less than four or five years old, and then as soon as they're ready for kindergarten, we're hearing that the school might have to close because there's not enough kids. So there's a disconnect there, and this bill is part of that work. And so I'm glad that it's kind of going to some slightly uncomfortable places with that critical sort of interchange between childcare and public education, because I think it's spurring on some really necessary conversations. I'll leave it at that, but yeah, I will be getting this report that is in the back in hard copy up on my website, and always please reach out. It's great to be at a live town meeting. This is fun, and I'll leave you, I'll leave you to it, but thanks so much.
Thank you both for sharing that information. I echo the joy. It's great to be at a live town meeting. Those who came in late, please, there's seats up front. I know people hate to be up front. I promise not to pick on you. I'm Jennifer Wagner. For those who arrived late, I am your new town moderator. I wish to keep up the traditions that the Town of Bristol is familiar with, so we will begin our meeting with everyone rising and pledging allegiance to the flag. If you'll join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, freedom, and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have your town report with you, here it is. Perhaps you looked at it online. We have people who are with us tonight, but you cannot see them. They are on Zoom. We're in a whole new world since the pandemic. So those people who are participating by Zoom can hear us. That is why we have to have everyone speak in a microphone when you speak this evening. There are three microphones in the hall, so if you'll get up from your seats when you wish to speak, there's a microphone here in front, there's a microphone in the aisle in the middle of the back, and then there's one microphone up in the balcony. The dedication in the annual report this year is to Reginald Dearborn. If town historian were in elected office, Reg would win by a landslide. So please do take a look. The sense of place that we derive through knowing the history of our town is wonderful and helps make Bristol even more special place, but we've dedicated tonight to Reg Dearborn. Next, I'd like to introduce the folks up here on stage. To my right, Sharon Lucia. To my left, Valerie Cappel. Sharon Lucia is our town clerk. Valerie Cappel, Valerie Cappels?
Capels.
Cappels is our town manager. Our Select Board Chair is Ian Albison. Darla Senical.
Joel.
Joel, thank you. Joel Bouvier. Oh, can you tell? I'm nervous. Gee. And, and hold up your sign for me. I knew that one. Michelle Purley. And Anthony DeMonico, our treasurer. Thank you. We have the folks from Neat Television here tonight. Thank you, Cal, and his son, Gus. We also have our sound operator being Sean this evening. Thank you to the Masons, who I believe have supplied the cookies in the back. We don't have a formal break built in, but if you find yourself a little peckish or famish, just feel free to wander quietly to the back and help yourself to a cookie, some cider, or some water. Our town clerk and administrator are not residents of the Town of Bristol. There's a rule under Robert's Rules of Order that say only folks who are residents and voters of Bristol, Town of Bristol, can speak during this assembly unless given permission by those who are here. I'm assuming there's no objection to either one of them speaking, as I think they'll have some good information to share and answer questions. Any objections? Hearing no objections, then, they'll be permitted to speak tonight. So I want to welcome both old community members and new community members here tonight, and also those folks who are just visiting. So anyone who's just visiting us tonight, could you please raise your hand up high, and I'll wave to you? Any visitors? Okay. Just to you visitors, welcome. We're glad that you are here tonight, but I have to remind you that you are not eligible to participate in tonight's discussion or to vote tonight. This is your meeting. I am just a moderator. I am here to facilitate your will. We follow a set of rules called Robert's Rules of Order. For those of you who know them, this will be a little refresher for those of you who haven't been to so many town meetings. This is just a little introduction to those rules. All motions and remarks and questions have to be addressed to me, the moderator, not to each other. When you wish to speak, please stand into the aisle, come up to a microphone, and then address everybody. When you speak, please state your first and last name before you speak. Sharon here is taking minutes, and so she needs to know who's speaking. If you are making a motion, please speak up your name. If you are moving the article or seconding the article, just please give us your full name so that we can get great minutes for tonight. We want to keep this discussion civil. I think Bristol is a role model of civility. I have always been impressed by everyone here in Bristol. We have incredible town discussions. There's a lot of passion. People take different points of view. We all care about our town. We all want what's best for our town, even if we have different points of view about how and what is best. So we make our remarks, again, towards the moderator. No personal attacks, no attacking the point of view of somebody who has spoken. I'm going to give everybody 10 minutes to speak. If you're up and speaking, a person may speak once, and I'm going to give everybody else a chance to speak before I recognize that person who's already spoken again. You have to be recognized by me, the moderator, in order to speak. So hold it, hold up your hands, stand up. I'll point to you. If you haven't been selected, sit back down and wait. You'll have another turn. We're only here tonight to take action on the articles that have been warned in the town report. We cannot take up any new business. If there's anything that you want to raise, bring to the attention of the Select Board, Article 24 allows you to raise new business. It cannot be voted on, but you may discuss it at that time. When you want to make an amendment to one of the warned articles, be sure that that amendment is relevant to the article. So it's got to be germane to something that has already been raised. We can't start a new topic that voters weren't warned about, because those who read the town report and maybe decided, I'm not going to come to town meeting tonight, they did so knowing what we were going to talk about. Therefore, we can't start talking about something new. Not fair. So Robert's Rules of Order apply. If you don't know them, I will help you formulate what you want to do, sort of within those Robert's Rules of Order. The articles that I mentioned, I'm going to read them once. I'm going to ask someone from the floor or the stage here to move the motion, and then somebody to second them. I will reread them, and then I'll ask people for discussion. Articles can be amended, and an amendment can be amended once, so we'll have one amendment on the floor at the time, and maybe one amendment to the amendment. I'm trying to try to keep it so it's not too confusing and we can follow it. Debate, if you are tired of hearing a discussion on a particular article, you may cut off debate by quote "calling the question." So if I recognize you, you've raised your hand, you can say, I call the question, and that cuts off debate. We'll take a vote on calling the question, and that requires a two-thirds majority vote to then vote on the question. Of course, if there's no more discussion, I will hold the vote on the discussion, on the article. To shorten the debate, please listen to those people who have spoken before you. That way, you can just add something rather than be repetitive of something that has already been said. After a voice vote, I'll be asking who's in favor. Yea, those who are against, nay. If it is too close to call, and I will call it. If it's obvious, I will call it. But if you don't think it's that obvious, or you don't think I've called it right, call for is quote "division of the House." And a division of the House requires, instead of a voice vote, a standing vote, and then we will count who is standing for it and who's standing against the article. We also have the ability to take a paper vote if you feel that that's another necessary or the way to vote a particular article. My role as a moderator is procedural. I'm not here to answer substantive questions or legal questions. I'm going to make some decisions. You might not agree with them, and you could overrule me. That's great. I wish I could overrule the judges when I'm in a courtroom. I'm a lawyer. That would be a great power. But you can overrule me. So you can challenge the moderator if you wish to, and I will have an opportunity to defend why I made a particular decision, and then open it up for discussion, and then you can vote, and you can overrule me. Because this is your meeting ultimately. There are some state laws that we cannot overrule, but I'll try to guide you to make sure we're not overriding any state laws. And to, if you have a question about something I've done procedurally, you can call Point of Order. Point of Order will interrupt the debate. I see a hand. If you please come to the microphone.
Kenneth Johnson, I would like to challenge the moderator to proceed to Article One.
Ah. Boy, I've already put the audience to sleep. Fine. Thank you. Well, I'd reach the end of my list anyways. Also, to list, I failed to observe that Select Board Member Peker Heffernan is also present. You cannot see him, but he is here on Zoom. People who are participating by Zoom, you can ask questions through the chat feature. It's being monitored by members of our Select Board, who will bring your question to the floor. However, you cannot vote. All right. Proceeding to the articles. I'll start with the warning. The legal voters of the Town of Bristol are hereby warned and notified to meet at Holly Hall in the said Bristol on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Said meeting to be recessed at the close of all business, to be recessed at the close of all business to be transacted from the floor to the following day, Tuesday, March 7, 2023, for voting by Australian ballot between the hours of 7:00 AM, at which time the polls will open, and 7:00 PM, at which time the polls will close, for the election of officers and voting on those articles so noted. Article One, to hear the reports of the town officers. Your name? Thank you. Any second? Your name? Thank you, Taylor. The town reports, does anyone have any questions? Now is your time to ask questions or to have any discussion. Yes? If you, yes, please.
Thank you. A great American politician.
Could you please repeat your name?
My name is Robert Bernstein.
Thank you.
A great American politician is said to have pointed out that any discussion or meeting or debate, one must listen to not only what is being said, but also what is not being said. I have a few things to say about that. I think there's four or five. And I have this to say in hopes that it helps our town. Thank you. In the town report, revolving loan fund, page 93, this is inadequate, the reporting, for this public money, mentioning only the unloaned amount in the fund, not providing details on the outstanding loans which should be required. The impetus for lack of reporting has been stated prior as a privacy issue, which has some merit, but the overriding issue is the public should know how its funds are used, as in most other cases of public money. Second, audit reporting. ago, was not reported for the annual report this year of that year. This happens almost every year and should be indefensible. In essence, the annual report has no auditor's report, which is both improper and a duty not fulfilled. This is becoming common for other towns now also and is not right. This is reported by the Select Board on page 53, but the report there seems to say that special conditions cause this to happen and that steps have been taken to ensure more timely and proper reporting. But since this has happened many times in the past, more commonly than not in recent years, it seems that this is at least possible, that despite the assurances, this will happen again. We will see. Police Department, page 43, which shows a 32% increase in two years in budget. A poorly attended separate meeting, which leads to a lack of discussion, aids these increases, and while this method of meeting is technically correct, this separate meeting is a disservice to interested constituents, some of whom might think a 32% increase is not warranted. And while the Select Board explains the thinking behind this increase on page 56, the Select Board has never welcomed discussion about the future of the police department and, to my knowledge, doesn't adequately think about this itself. The policy of renting space for the police department offices, for example, has proved a long-term costly mistake. A fair and independent study should determine how much policing is needed, what range of this, and how to fund this police force in the future. I forgot to write in this note that I made today, one other issue. That is the overuse of the executive session in the Select Board meetings. The Select Board may think that they are following the legal precedents for this. I think they probably aren't and could be challenged, but in almost every Select Board meeting, there's now a warned executive session. This is not what the law was intended to cover. Because it shows us not, it doesn't give proper warning if you warn it all the time. We then don't know what's going on. I think it's overused because, well, let me just leave it at that, since I'm not really prepared to make the argument, but let me say that I think it's challengeable what you're doing, and I think it's a disservice to the town to do so much of it, when it probably isn't necessary. One smaller and more personal note. The surface water drainage on Fitch Avenue does not work well, and the road's surface water is flooded often in spring runoff several times, and it's flooded several private buildings. I mention this because I have one of those buildings, and I've mentioned this before. But I don't mention it very frequently, and I don't think anything's being done to remedy this problem. The town has been notified of this, and since one of my buildings unfortunately floods, I mention this again, and I carefully say, "It's the road water that does this. The Select Board and former road foremen have told us, who have complained, that it's not the road, but it's obviously the road." Okay? I want to add that our town government might be an example, a typical example, of what small-town government is and can do these days, and in that, we should be satisfied. But if we think of a higher standard, there's much the town government could do better. Matching these two thoughts of what's acceptable and what could be better should be the challenge for all of us as interested citizens. And with that, I'm going to conclude and give the Board a copy of my notes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, not hearing any. Does anyone want to move to accept the town report?
So moved.
Your name?
Robert Sikkema.
Thank you. Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Believe the ayes have it. The reports are accepted. Articles 2 and 3 are not articles for voting on tonight. Article 2 relates to the elections tomorrow, where you will be electing various officers from the town. Article 3 relates to a vote regarding the Lincoln School District. So you can read those Articles 2 and 3, and I'm going to move on to Article 4. I will read the article and then ask for someone to move and second the article. Article 4. Will the voters of the Town of Bristol vote that all real property taxes payable in installments shall bear interest at a rate of three-quarters of 1% per month or fraction thereof for the first three months, and thereafter 1 and 1/4% per month or fraction thereof from the due date of each installment, with the payment of the real property taxes and interest to the town treasurer for the town's fiscal year period of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, real property taxes being due in two equal installments on November 15, 2023, and April 15, 2024, by physical delivery to the town office before midnight on that day? Will someone move that article?
So moved. Ann Wallace.
Thank you. Will someone second?
Second. Ted Beckers.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on that article? Yes? Please come and approach the microphone.
Good evening, and I want to thank the Select Board for serving. I know that the vast amount of money is not the reason you serve, so I want to thank you for your service to the community.
Now, have you stated your name before you go further?
My name is Dave Sharp.
Thank you.
We built our home in Bristol in 1971, and we've been fortunate since then never to be delinquent in our taxes, I believe. And as I look at Article 3 and 4, I'm sorry, 4 and 5, it's possible for a person, individual who's not so fortunate, to not get their taxes paid on time and suffer between a 15% and 20% penalty if they're delinquent for a year, and they could lose their home. So it seems to me that the community has sufficient power in that they can confiscate the home and put it up for sale, that they don't need to also have an exorbitant interest rate and penalty rate. So I would encourage voters, I would encourage the Select Board to put a different Article 3 up, and I would also like to speak on Article 4 because I think we should strike that altogether. Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's correct. 5. 4 should be changed. 5 should be defeated.
Are you making an amendment, or are you just voicing your concerns?
Oh, my goodness. I hadn't thought of amending it. I will sit down, and maybe as discussion moves forward, I'll think of an amendment.
Thank you. Any further discussion or response? In the back? Up to the mic, and please state your name first.
Greg Allen. Thinking then of page 37, with the delinquent tax report, is this a lot higher than in the past? I know you have a list going back a ways, but 153,000 for the current year, I'm just curious. Seems a little high. And what are the, you know, it's always an issue in trying to collect delinquent taxes and being fair with folks, but there's a lot of money out there.
Hello, everyone. This is my first town meeting for Bristol. My name's Anthony DeMonaco. I'm the town treasurer and delinquent tax collector. How's everyone doing tonight? So just to speak a little bit about delinquent taxes, I've sort of switched a little bit prior methods of collection. Given the circumstances that we are presented with currently with the pandemic and the continual financial strain of inflation, I've been working with individuals that have delinquent taxes to set up individual payment plans. In addition, I just want to bring to everyone's attention that with the American Rescue Plan Fund, the state of Vermont was given, they had distributed some to the Vermont Housing Financial Authority, and they have started a delinquent tax and delinquent utility fund? Well, yeah, assistance, sorry, excuse me, that I actually really strongly believe in because I believe this is an opportunity for those that have suffered through the pandemic, whether it's job loss or anything like that, to actually get pulled out of debt, so to speak. So if it is on page 37, in case anyone is curious, there is an excerpt at the bottom that explains how to apply. There is a phone number there as well as online, and we are just trying to get people to get them back on their feet. Now, if you have delinquent taxes, please feel free to either contact me via email, treasurer@bristolvt.org, or my, the town's phone number, which is extension 5 for me, and I would gladly work with anyone that is struggling.
All right. I'm going to go to the back. In the blue face mask, you had your hand up. Do you approach the microphone first?
He already asked his question.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, I double dipped.
My point of error, you did start the...
Yeah, no, I can sit down and let folks, but while I'm here, so I noticed on 37 that there are only three asterisks, three asterisks for folks that have payment plans, and you have not answered the question of how, what is there? Almost $300,000, $400,000 out here? And how does that relate to the past? And I understand the pandemic issues, and, you know, the state and whoever has been pushing the federal funds, which is an excellent program, I am surprised folks aren't taking advantage of it, so that I don't see a lot of effort here.
I just noticed that there is a typo. 2020-2021 delinquent tax number 90,276.25. That is the most recent, that is April's payment for the previous year. So I'm hoping to see that number significantly decrease by the end of this coming year for the second April payment.
Thank you. My apologies for the point of order by calling back the person who had just asked the question instead of asking someone else. It was the face mask. I couldn't recognize you. Mr. Bernstein, if you'll stand and approach the mic and then repeat your name for our records.
Well, I have several things to say, and in general, I'm not in favor of changing this article by amendment or in the future either. We recently, within the last 10 years, reduced the rate of interest from 8% to 4%. We had a pretty good discussion back then.
Senator, that was a new question.
Thank you. And so that's recently been a movement in the direction that's been suggested, though not brought out as amendment. Two, if we were to move this tonight, we would also have some effect on the general fund because we have budgeted for delinquent tax collection, and so you should see that. That's on page 21. It's not a terribly significant number, but we'd have to amend that too, I think, and I'm not sure we're ready to do that. So, but in general, the feeling about this is while it's nice to think of helping local citizens, we may be helping them more by keeping the rate the way it is, and that may help us with the collections also if it's a significant rate. So I think those are good points to consider as we go forward.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Jennifer, I would hope that we would, I can remember a few years ago, Ken Weston made a motion that this was 8.5%. It used to be 8.5% went to the tax collector, and now we've moved it to 4. Now, you've got to remember, out of that 4%, the tax collector has to hire the attorney to have a sale and do the legal work. They pay that out of their pocket, the tax collector, if it's a voted position. Now we've brought it back in-house, but that's how we come out of that. And I look at Dave, at you, and Doug over there, and maybe even Bob, years ago, you can remember, this tax book used to be about three pages and $480,000, $500,000 of delinquent taxes. And I don't like 153,000 or 300,000, but it's, we're moving in the right direction, and nobody wants to, we haven't had a tax sale in years. Maybe a mobile home that they realize what they owe taxes on it and what it's worth. It's easier just to walk away and so-called "give it to us," and then we call, act, the trust and say, they'll say, "We'll take it and put a new one in there." But I would hope that we wouldn't vote this down.
Thank you. Is there a question in the back? Come on up to the microphone and please state your name.
My name is Micah Plant. I live over on West Street. So nice to see all of you here tonight. This doesn't pertain exactly to the idea of, Robert, it doesn't pertain, you know, exactly to the idea of amending this article or not, but I was just wondering, looking at the list, I see lots of folks on there might owe between $500,000 and $6,000, something like that. Is there anything that's in our power to keep people from racking up bills like 26 grand? Just curious.
I didn't hear your last...
Oh, I was just wondering, you know, like, there are imbalances on there, like, we, you know, that principal owed is 153,000 some odd, but, you know, there are big chunks of change out there that strike me as plausibly six to eight years of property taxes not being paid. So I was just curious about if there's anything that we usually do to keep those situations from arising, because it seems like it would take a long time for them to happen.
I'd have to revert that to our town treasurer. I don't know, some of those are, yeah, they're 6,000 or 8,000, whether those are a few years or just...
Oh, well, there's one that's 26 grand or...
Yeah, Anthony just, Michelle just whispered in my ear, yeah, that is, previous years also are in there. That's their total payout.
Right, right. That makes sense. Okay. Well, thanks.
Any other discussions or questions? Go ahead.
So, yes, Joel, I congratulate the Select Board for bringing...
Again, I'm going to have you restate your name, even though you've said it two times?
I'm still Dave Sharp.
Thank you.
And we still live on Mehan Road. I think it was great to bring delinquent tax collection in-house, and it's one of the reasons that we were able to reduce the penalty from 8% to 4% some years ago. And you're right, we're moving in the right direction. So in that spirit, I would like to move to amend Article 4. In the third line, it says, "And thereafter 1 and 1/4% per month." I would move to amend that to say, "And thereafter 1% per month." That would be striking "and 1/4%." Thank you.
Thank you. So there is now an amendment being offered, and that is, would make the entire article read, I'm going to try and paraphrase this, this was a long article. Well, the voters of the Town of Bristol vote that all real property taxes payable in installments shall bear an interest at the rate of 3/4 of 1% per month or fraction thereof for the first three months, and thereafter 1% per month...
Or fraction.
Did I get that right?
Yeah, you got it right.
Okay.
Or fraction.
Thank you. 1% per month or fraction thereof for the due date of each installment. Is there any discussion on that amendment?
You need a second.
You need to have a second.
Thank you for the point of order, and that was a second by Mr. Bernstein. Thank you.
No, I wasn't seconding.
I need a second.
No second.
Again, thank you all for your patience with me as a new moderator. We have an amendment on the floor. Is there a second to the amendment?
Other second.
Throw out a name.
Richard Voits.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment specifically?
Call for the question.
All right. There has been a call for the question. All in favor of calling the question and voting on the amendment only, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to voting on the amendment only, say nay. Those opposed to voting on the amendment only, say nay. The ayes have it. We will now vote on the amendment. I will read the article with the amendment, and then we will hold a vote on the amendment only. "Well, the voters of the town of Bristol vote that all real property taxes payable installment shall bear interest at a rate of three-quarters of 1% per month or fraction thereof for the first three months, and thereafter, 1% per month or fraction thereof from the due date of each installment. All in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I'm going to call for a division of the House myself. I'm going to redo the vote, and those who are in favor, stand. All in favor of this amendment, please stand and be counted. All right, that was easy. The nays just shouted really loud. Have a seat. The motion with, the amendment passes, but now we're back to the main article. Is there any further discussion on the article itself or questions? I forget to look in the balcony, so please wave your hands wildly if you have something and approach the mic. Okay, hearing no further discussion or questions, anything up here from someone on the stage?
On the amendment? On the amendment.
Were there any questions from the treasurer?
I guess my only, my only concern is, we've had this discussion in the past just about what is the incentive to pay your taxes if you don't have a penalty? I mean, I understand there's a, there's a fine line of who can afford it, who can't afford it, but if we just keep going backwards and not charge them anything, there's no incentive to pay your taxes. What does Peaker say? You need some teeth in it.
Yeah, Peaker texted me just now, and he's home sick. We need teeth in this, otherwise people will just opt not to pay.
We're on Article Four. I see a hand over here, so-
I have spoken.
You have spoken, so has Mr. Sharp. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'll give you the floor first, and then Mr. Sharp, since he spoke last.
Thanks so much. Micah Plant, again. I guess that's what I was getting at before. It seems like whatever we can do to keep these situations from progressing to the point where people owe these huge balances, you know, because then we can go back and forth about what kind of percentage rate to pay, and I understand, like, the argument that, you know, people need incentives to pay their property taxes, but it strikes me that the proactive approach might, whatever we might be able to do to keep these big balances from developing in the first place, might be a good way of attacking it as, maybe as we go forward. Just a thought.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Sure. Mr. Sharp, please approach the microphone and repeat your name.
I'm Dave Sharp. Thank you. So the idea that the town can take the property and sell it, if that's not enough of an impetus for people to pay their taxes, I don't know what is. And to penalize those in our community who are least able to pay their taxes and maintain their homes and, and not become homeless, it seems to me that we ought to go as easy as we can. Now, I have not asked for, to vote this down. I've not asked for a large decrease. This is a tiny amount reduction to respect the fact that there are people in our community that struggle. They struggle to put food on the table, and they struggle to pay their taxes. And this is an awful lot, nearly between 15 and 20% a year to, to have to pay if they're not able to pay their taxes on time.
So Dave, let me ask you this, then. If you say it's a, we're penalizing people, you know, for not paying their taxes, well, if we have the right to do a tax sale on them, isn't that even a bigger penalty in then making them homeless? I mean, we try to work, I know both Jen and Anthony try to work with all the delinquent taxpayers to set up payment plans, and in this case, getting them on the programs. So we try not to do the tax sales for that, for that specific reason, but, I mean, there's got to be a penalty at some point to say, okay, you just can't keep not paying your taxes.
I didn't propose taking the penalty away.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying-
Number one. Number two, our reduction, along with bringing the tax collection, delinquent tax collection in-house, and the reduction from 8% to 4% for the day-after penalty, and possibly, there might have been a reduction in the monthly interest somewhere along the line, might have been higher than what's in Article Five. All of these things combined have reduced our unpaid taxes from nearly a half million dollars to $135,000. So we're moving in the right direction, and, and I applaud your work on the select board and the delinquent tax collector, and this is another piece, I believe, in, in not inflicting harm on our citizens who are least able to survive on a daily basis.
Kenneth Johnson, just to say that I support Dave's opinion wholeheartedly, and that people are struggling, and it's a good thing to, for the town to tread as gently as possible.
Thank you. Any more comments or discussion? Okay, all right, I'm going to go ahead and read Article Four and hold a vote. Article Four, "Will the town voters, will the voters of the town of Bristol vote that all real property taxes payable in installment shall bear interest at a rate of three-quarters of 1% per month or fraction thereof for the first three months, and thereafter, 1% per month or fraction thereof from the due date of each installment with the payment of the real property taxes and interest to the town treasurer for the town's fiscal year period of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Real property taxes being due in two equal installments on November 15, 2023, and April 15, 2024, by fiscal delivery to the town office before midnight on that date." Those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
I heard an aye. I knew I'd try to catch one. Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All right, the ayes have it. The article passes as amended. Moving on to Article Five, "Will the town limit the amount of the penalty charged by the collector of delinquent taxes for payments made after the due date for payment to 4% of the tax collected pursuant to 32 VSA Section 1674 (IIIa)? Anybody want to move that article?
I'll move the article for a moment.
Thank you. Any second.
Carol Price.
Thank you. Any discussion? Oh, I got to read it one more time. "Will the town limit the amount of penalty charged by the collector of delinquent taxes for payments made after the due date for payment to 4% of the tax collected?" Any discussion or questions? Not hearing any, I will go forward and move this for vote. Article Five, "Will the town limit the amount of the penalty charged by the collector of delinquent taxes for payments made after the due date for payment to 4% of the tax collected pursuant to 32 VSA Section 1674 and so on?" All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Five passes. Moving on to Article Six, "Will the voters adopt the proposed 2023-2024 fiscal year general fund operating budget in the amount of $1,113,885, subject to modification by actions on the subsequent articles, with $923,306 to be raised by taxes through a tax rate set by the select board on the 2023 grant list sufficient to raise $923,306?" Will someone move this article, please?
Someone, Kenneth Johnson.
Thank you. Will someone second it?
Sarah Stott.
Thank you very much. "Will the voters adopt the proposed fiscal year generating operating budget in the amount of $1,113,885, subject to modification by actions on subsequent articles, with $923,306 to be raised by taxes through a tax rate by the select board on the 2023 grant list sufficient to raise that amount?" Any questions or discussion on that? Not seeing or hearing any. I think the rules make me read it again. If anybody wants to put a point of order up and not make me read this thing so many times, I would be happy, but I'm going to read it again. Article Six, "Will the voters adopt the proposed 2023-24 fiscal year general fund operating budget in the amount of $1,113,885, subject to modification by actions on the subsequent articles, with $923,306 to be raised by taxes through a tax rate set by the select board on the 2023 grant list sufficient to raise $923,306?" Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seems the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Article Six is passed. Moving on to Article Seven, "Will the voters set the salaries that shall be paid to the members of the select board at the same as fiscal year 2022, being $500 plus $15 per meeting and $25 per meeting for the chair?" Will someone move this article?
No.
Oh, we've got a lot of people over here. Miss Tom Pollock, second. Would you like that honor? All right, John Moyers, second. So, "Will the voters set the salaries that be paid to the members of the select board same as fiscal year 2022, being $500 plus $15 per meeting and $25 per meeting for the chair?" Any discussion or questions on that? All right, not hearing any questions or discussion, we move that for a vote. I must reread it. Article Seven.
Should we dispense with the rereading?
Is that a motion?
It's a motion that we dispense with the rereading.
We have, and we have a second. Thank you. Who made the motion?
Robert Sickelhoff.
And the second?
Jessica Player.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor that I don't reread this, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, because you love hearing my voice. Nobody? All right, passed. We're voting. Those in favor of Article Seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. Article Seven passes. Article Eight, "Will the voters adopt the proposed 2023-2024 fiscal year Public Works Highway Fund operating budget in the amount of $894,658, with $774,486 to be raised by taxes through a tax rate set by the select board on the 2023 grant list sufficient to raise $774,8486?" Will someone move this article?
Someone.
State your name.
Kenneth Johnson.
Thank you. A second. State your name.
Ted Lillis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lillis. We have motion and second. If anyone wants to waive me rereading these things as, for the entire meeting, as opposed to individually, please feel free to do so at any time.
Someone.
Well, let's take one person.
I think we got a date.
All right, your name?
John Moyers.
John Moyers moved. Seconded. Do I have a second?
Richard Butts.
Richard Butts is going to take the second on that one. Okay. So that was Article Eight, the Public Works Highway. Any discussion on that?
Can we vote on that?
Oh, of course we do. Thank you for the point of order. Those in favor of me not rereading for a second time after an article has been moved and seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Thank you. That's a nice compliment. All right, that motion passes. Any discussion, questions on the general, the Public Works and Highway Article Eight? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. "Will the voters adopt the proposed Public Works Highway Fund operating budget in the amounts that I have raised?" Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article Eight passes. Article Nine, "Will the voters adopt the proposed 2023-2024 fiscal year arts, parks, and recreation department budget in an amount of $349,269, with $250,469 to be raised by taxes through a tax rate set by the select board on the 2023 grant list sufficient to raise $250,469?" Will someone move that article?
Ann Wallace.
Thank you. Will someone second that?
Ted Lillis.
Ted Lillis, thank you. Any discussion on that or questions? Hearing no questions, seeing no hands, then I'm going to go ahead and, we'll vote on Article Nine. "Will the voters adopt the proposed 2023-24 fiscal year arts, parks, and recreation department budget in the amounts that I read?" All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It appears the ayes have it. We have adopted and passed Article Nine. Article Ten, "Will the voters authorize changing the name of the Capital Building Fund to the Capital Building and Maintenance Fund, and authorize the transfer of $16,000 of the June 30, 2022 general fund, unassigned fund, to balance it?" Will someone move this article?
Someone.
And your name?
Robert Sickelhoff.
Thank you. Any second?
Carol Price.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Article Ten, any discussion or questions in the back? Please approach the microphone and state your name.
Craig Allen. And this applies to 10, 11, and 12, actually. I looked through the report, maybe I missed it, but I don't see any statement of what the unassigned fund balance for 2022 actually is, since there's no audit report, et cetera, in here. So I'd like to know what the total unassigned fund balance and how much is left after, you know, doing these transfers, which are probably, you know, a good idea. But it'd be nice to know what the balance sheet of the town is.
We're, because of the lack of audit for 2022, we currently don't have the 2022 number, but we are working from the 2021 number. Anthony, I don't know if you have specifics of what that was.
The amount that we came out to be-
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Could you please get closer to the microphone?
So the numbers in 10, 11, and 12, take into consideration that the select board, as well as the town, likes to keep a rainy day fund.
Emergency fund.
Which is emergency fund, so with it, in case anything is to happen, we do have capital in order to meet those needs. Having, that's already taken out of the equation, so that money exists. This is the residual of what is left. So that is $46,000.
Any other questions, gentlemen here on my left stage right?
Brendan Galvin, can you just explain why the change to the fund and if that has any bearing on how the money can be used?
In terms of the change of the name? We changed the name because it was, seemed a more fitting name to what those funds are being used for. We thought the name Capital Building Fund would sort of demonstrate actual building, an entire building, versus what we usually use the money for is repairs for the buildings that the town owns.
More transparent.
Right, more, more transparent.
Any other questions or discussion?
Craig Allen again. I guess I'm curious, without the 2022 audit, then how do you really know that you have those funds in the unassigned fund balance for this article? I mean, I know you sort of assume you do, but you're saying you do, and you're stating you don't have the evidence to support it.
That's because we're using the unassigned fund balance for 2021 as an estimation.
It stands 2022.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion or response? All right, we will vote on Article 10. Did you have some comment, question? I haven't called the vote yet, so you may approach.
Okay. My name's Sarah Stott, and, yeah, I think, so, could we say that this is a typo, then? Because, so in all three articles, instead of saying it, just to follow up on the previous speaker's question, this is really based on the 2021- the previous speaker's question, this is really based on the 2021 unassigned balance.
Yes, that is correct.
That's correct.
So you would.
I would say technically, the money from 2021 carries over to 2022, which is why we use 2022. The reality is that the actual amount, we don't know the actual amount, but it's probably higher than what we have budgeted for here. We didn't want to use speculative numbers in terms of what we had in those unassigned funds, and so we used 2021. But it's, it is, we classify it as 2022, but we technically, we don't know the full amount of what 2022 is.
So perhaps when we vote, we could amend this to say 2021, because that's actually what we're doing.
I don't, I don't know if it's really 2020. It's based on 2021, but the funds, the funds just continue to go over. You know, it's not 2021 fund and they're there and no longer. They do transfer over to 2022. Does that make sense?
Yep, it does. Are you making an amendment or just?
No, I'm fine with leaving it as it is, because it's really about 22 numbers, but you're basing it on 21 numbers.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bernstein, please approach the microphone and repeat your name.
Yes, thank you. Robert Bernstein. Well, you may think that we can do this, but as Michelle has just said, these funds carry over. There could be a negative fund balance at this point, as far as we know. And as far as you know, you think that's not going to be the case, but it could easily be so. There have been negative fund balances in the past. They're usually made up the year after. So no, so proposing that we take something that we don't really know that we have does not seem to be a good way to proceed.
No, I, that we do know that we have about, it was about $130,000, $135,000 from the 2021 fund balance, unassigned fund balance. And that's all we are basing our number on. Where, we, we keep our emergency fund in there, so there's money in there that we use as emergency fund, and this was the excess beyond that emergency fund.
Well, thank you, but I think I understood you to say that it carries over. So if you had 146, and then you had a negative 146 the next year, you wouldn't have it.
No, because we wouldn't, the budget is based on the current year. I mean, we don't, we don't put that money back into our budget.
No. No, this isn't a budgeted item. I understand that. I'm saying that the, that my understanding is these fund balances carry over. They're showed in the audit. We try to keep them to a minimum, a positive minimum, but we don't know what they are. And since it carries over from 21, we don't, and don't know what 22 is, we don't know that we have the money. That's what I think is the case. I'm unconvinced otherwise. And, and I guess therefore, I'll vote against these things.
Let me just add that I think you're trying to do a good job with this, but I just think
there, that at least as far as I understand, we don't know that money is there.
We don't know the number for the 2020, 2022 unassigned fund balance. We know the amount for the 2021 unassigned balance.
Enough to say we don't know the audited number.
Right, we don't know the audited number.
We know what our books tell us.
Not sure we can pick you up on the microphone, Darla. Can you lean forward?
What I was saying is, we don't know the audited number. We know what our books tell us. So there's an independent auditor that comes to look over all of our records. So that's the number that we're not 100%, you know, that we don't have at this time. But we know, if we, if we knew that we were in a negative for some reason, we wouldn't have asked this question of you.
Well, and we, we, right, and we wouldn't have, if we knew what the 2022 number would, was, these num, these requests might be higher.
Yes, please come on up to a microphone and state your name.
Hi, Beth Eckers. Can we somehow amend it to the unaudited amount? And please share the unaudited amount again? What's the unaudited, unaudited amount that you feel you have to pull these fundings from, so that we're clear on? Maybe a number or a close number? What do you have in your bank? What do you have in your account?
I would just, I'd just like to say as personally as, just, I'm, I'm financially conservative with estimates on, in regards to using unaudited numbers. So we're only trying to use what is verified through a third party. It's just, it's a matter of, it's a control in place that I'd, I'd like to have still, just as a regard to making sure that our books.
But we're looking for a number.
I, I understand. I understand that. I'm just trying to say that.
Darla, what did you say that, what did you say that number was?
I didn't have an exact number, I'm sorry.
Unaudited. You can't say?
Yeah, I'm audited, yes. But I didn't have an exact number for you.
So, so why are we voting on this? As I guess I agree with.
We're, we're voting on these, this is $36,000.
I know what we're voting on.
That's been left over from 21, 2021. That's what we're asking to put it aside.
I just don't know why we're voting on it if we don't have the numbers that we.
We have these numbers, audited, third-party audited numbers of $36,000 left over. And we can't spend that without your voter approval. We can't just put it in 22 budget or the 23 budget.
Because it's been audited.
That's the 2021 number, in fact?
It's $36,000, only the 2021 number that's been audited by a third-party firm, hired by the town.
Okay, so that was audited for, for 21?
Correct.
What is audited for 22?
And it's not done yet.
So when are they done, I guess? When are these audits normally done? Should they be done before town meeting day, or are they never done before?
I mean, yes, they, it would be great if they were. However, as it was previously mentioned by another resident of the town, audits are taking longer now. There's substantially more requirements. Just for us alone, we started with a new audit firm last year. And what often happens is you need to present, it, it's like, you're trying to, they're trying to know everything about you. So they have to go back to essentially the financial beginning, review previous auditors' reports, and then build their portfolio. It's taking longer this year because they are now going through all of our processes and our accounts, going as far back as six years, roughly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sharp, if you would like to approach, please state your name again.
Dave Sharp. So I think it's just an unfortunate use of language in the article. If, if it had been stated something like using audited 21 funds, then it would be clearer for everybody. I, I, I think it's clear to me that you have the funds and this is an appropriate use of them, and we should move on with the vote. So clean up the language for next year. Thank you.
Noted.
Yes, please come up and, you're going to take to the microphone, because there's on Zoom. When you get out of your seat, I know, it's inconvenient. And state your name.
Ann Wallace. I just want to call the question.
You're right, you didn't have to. All right, the question has been called. Those in favor of calling the question, that ends debate on this and brings us to a vote next. Those in favor of calling the questions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We will now vote on Article 10. Will the voters authorize changing the name of the Capital Building Fund to the Capital Building and Maintenance Fund and authorize the transfer of $16,000 of the June 30, 22, 2022 general fund, unassigned fund balance to it? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
It appears that the ayes have it. The article has passed. Article 11, will the voters authorize the transfer of $10,000 from the June 30, 2022 general fund, unassigned balance, to the Capital Technology Fund? Will someone move this article?
So moved.
Thank you. Seconded?
Sarah Stott.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Allen, if you'll take the microphone, repeat your name.
Craig Allen. I'm in favor of the, the articles. I just want perhaps the public to understand that without the audit, I've been a CFO for over 20 years with nonprofits. And sometimes the audits find some odd items, and you could end up, I mean, I don't think it will happen, but you can end up suddenly with a loss when you did not expect it. I've seen that in other, you know, organizations. I've read their financial statements, and I've saved outfit from going into bankruptcy, because they weren't reading their financial statements internally. So that I don't obviously think that's the case here. But it's a little disingenuous to say, we had the monies from 2021, and we, you know, we know we got it for 2022, because again, the, you know, the audit rules change and so on and so forth. So that, you know, again, it's perhaps a wording issue. But please understand that things can change very quickly.
Thank you. Can, can you hear me? Okay. I just want to add a comment that this article and these, these particular articles are asking voters to authorize that transfer. It's not requiring it or mandating it. And as the 2022 audit progresses, and i-if for some peculiar reason, it is found that there is some irregularity, then the funds wouldn't get transferred. But quite likely, we won't have that experience. And when we get the, when the 2022 audit is completed and it's verified that the funds are there, then this vote and subsequent votes would authorize those transfers to be made.
Yes, you have a question there? Please approach the microphone and state your name.
Brendan Galvin, can you just talk to when the audit is expected to be completed? And what you're, are you planning on publishing the results of that and redoing the town plan? Or when, how can people know about what the audited figures are? Thanks.
I guess, Gavin, we were hoping they'd be done by December or January. We keep asking, Anthony, and he goes, I keep calling, and they says it's not ready yet.
Did he give you any?
I guess the last part of it is, when you do get the audited numbers, is, is it, do we have to wait till the next year's town report to know those, or are they be, plan to be published?
No, well, they will be published on the website. And, and all past audits are available on the town website and are available in the town offices.
Mr. Bernstein? Stein? Stein? Which one is it? Yes, you. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Robert Bernstein. Well, thank you, Valerie, for the explanation. With that explanation, I'll be voting for this article.
Any other discussion or questions?
So I will say, this transfer is in addition to the number on Article 13, which is 7,000 for the technology fund, which is usually the amount that we put in. I asked for this addition and for the unassigned funds to be used to work on the town's information technology sort of structure and try to make improvements to the town website and various other things to do with technology. So that's why this, this particular addition, using these funds, is in here.
Any other response, comment, or discussion on Article 11? Okay, we will then vote on it. Article 11, will the voters authorize the transfer of $10,000 from the June 30, 2022 general fund, unassigned fund balance to the Capital Technology Fund? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 11 passes. Article 12, will the voters authorize the transfer of $10,000 from the June 30, 2022 general fund, unassigned fund balance to the cemetery fund? Will someone please move Article 12? Thank you. Mr. Lyle, seconded. Ms. Wallace? Yes, thank you. So discussion, questions or comments on Article 12? Ms. Wallace, please approach the microphone, unless you're calling the vote, in which case you can sit, sit there.
Just curious about.
And I'll have you repeat your name, just because I said it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That didn't make a record.
Ann Wallace.
Thanks.
Just curious about the cemetery fund and why, I mean, Ian, you just filled us in on why the technology, which is the question I would have asked first, had I thought of it. So I'd love to hear about, somebody talk about the cemetery fund.
And this was actually started by a former Select Board member, and I thought it was a good piece of legislation that he started, was, we've got about five cemeteries in town that, that town owns, and they're not the big ones down here below the hill, or the Mount St. Joseph's over on the corner of Burpian Plank. It's the one up by Hartscrabble Road and some of Mount East Fields that our original settlers of Bristol live. Now, they don't even use them anymore, but they're responsible of the town. And so Ken wanted to, Ken Weston wanted to start a cemetery fund. We agreed with him, and we started it. And actually, we're going to reach into that fund and we hopefully this fund. The cemetery up on Hartscrabble Road took some pretty good damage during the December storm. Lot of trees down, and we're working with a tree, our tree warden, has been giving us some advice on, should be taking all the big stuff down up there. And we're going to be taking that down before we, hopefully before we can get on the fields, before the crops go in and take the trees down. And then we're going to put a fence around that cemetery, or at least in the front of it. That's what this fund support, above and you guys vote in your general fund budget, just the moam, the five cemeteries that we own. Doesn't cover this big stuff. And that's what this will do.
Fixing the stones.
And fixing the stones. We want to fix some stones up there also.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on Article 12? Not seeing any, we will vote. Will the voters authorize the transfer of $10,000 from the June 30, 2022 general fund, unassigned fund balance to the cemetery fund? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It appears the ayes have it. Article 12 passes. Article 13, will the voters appropriate the following sums to be placed in various town reserve fund accounts as noted? Reserve funds, Capital Highway Equipment Fund in the amount of $135,000, Capital Sidewalk Fund, $40,000, Capital Fire Equipment Fund, $25,000, Capital Fire Vehicle Fund, $125,000, Capital Technology Fund, $7,000, Capital Building Fund, $30,000, Capital Road Fund, $45,000, Reappraisal Fund, $15,000, Capital Paving Fund, $135,000, Conservation Fund, $10,000, for a total of $567,000. Will someone please move Article 13, lucky 13?
So moved. Robert Sickelhoff.
Thank you. And second?
Deborah McLeod.
Thank you very much. Any discussion, questions? Yes, please approach the microphone and state your name before you begin.
Katie Raycroft-Meyer. And I have a question about sidewalk fund and if there is a sidewalk inventory underway.
Someone here respond?
There is a, an inventory of sidewalks that was completed in 2016, 2017. It has not yet been updated. We've been going through the list pretty much from top to bottom on a year-to-year basis. There is not currently a sidewalk project teed up for this coming season, because we were hoping to get some updated information. We have a relatively new bicycle pedestrian committee, and we've, we've asked them to, for their input on updating this, this sidewalk inventory. I've also reached out to the Addison County Regional Planning Commission for assistance, perhaps, whether it's through an intern or other kinds of resources that'll help us develop an inventory that we can easily maintain. It would be really nice to be able to inventory the sidewalks, the width, the condition, and other qualities about those sidewalks, so we can prioritize which ones should be replaced in any given year, and we can plan for that. And the sidewalk fund is, would be available to schedule those projects. And also, when there's, something comes up unexpectedly, repair that's needed for a sidewalk, we can, we are able to tap into that sidewalk reserve fund for those unplanned projects.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, please stand up, approach the microphone, and start with your name.
My name's David Melikar. My, my question was about the, the total of $150,000 for, for the fire department. Can, can you explain what that money's for?
You, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I'm sorry, I apologize.
David Melikar.
David. You'll see, there's two funds there. One's the fire equipment and one's for fire for vehicles. The equipment funds, air packs, gear, turnout gear, put a fireman on the ground with an air pack on, and turnout gear is somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 grand. That comes out of that. The vehicle fund is just for the vehicle. Doesn't. Doesn't go for equipment, doesn't go for air tanks or any of that other stuff. And that vehicle fund, so when we buy a fire truck, which one is on order now and if we should get it, we hope sometime in April, I think that was in the neighborhood of $625,000 to $650,000, that truck will be paid for. This is what this fund for. It goes into a fund. So when we order, and the chief and his officers in the department have it on a rotating schedule with the four trucks they own, to which ones will be replaced. We try to keep the big trucks 20 years and the smaller ones 25. And so, but that's the goal of the budget. So we don't have to bond for a fire truck. I can remember days when we'd order a fire truck and we'd have $0.10 in the budget, and we'd bond for one, and we'd be paying for it for a long time. So that's what that is for. It's a long answer, but I'm, you got it.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion on Article 13?
Going back to the comment about the sidewalk fund, I just want to add that that fund can, has also been used to meet our match requirements for grants that we get for different sidewalk projects. So that fund is especially valuable for being able to secure grants for these sidewalk projects.
Anyone else? Yes, please stand up, approach the microphone, and start with your, introducing yourself.
I'm Betsy Blair, and I would like to say how nice it is to be in a town that puts away money, saves it up before spending it, so that they're making interest on the money instead of waiting and then taking out a loan and paying somebody else interest. So I'm a big supporter of the town having all of these little funds.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions, discussion? All right, let's vote on Article 13. Will the voters appropriate the following sums to be placed in various town reserve fund accounts as noticed? Everything I read before totaling $567,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Appears the ayes have it. Article 13 passes. Article 14. Will the voters approve an appropriation of $173,410.88? Very specific. For the Lawrence Memorial Library, for its annual operating budget, said some to be raised by taxes. Will someone please move Article 14 in favor of the library? Ms. Wallace. And second behind you, your name?
Ann Wallace.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments on Article 14? Seeing none, let's vote. All of those in favor of Article 14? Will the voters approve an appropriation of $173,410.88 for the Lawrence Memorial Library for its annual operating budget? The said some to be raised by taxes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Everyone loves the library. The article passes. Article 15. Will the voters renew the exemption of the Bristol Rescue Squad for its property located at 45 Moncton Road from real estate taxes for a period of five years pursuant to 32 VSA Section 3840? Will someone move Article 15?
So move Ed Hilbert.
Thank you. Any second?
Carol Price.
Thank you. Ed Hilbert? Any discussion, comments, or other? Not hearing any, let's vote on Article 15. Will the voters renew the exemption of the Bristol Rescue Squad for its property located at 45 Moncton Road from real estate taxes for a period of five years? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article 15 passes. Moving on, Article 16. Will the voters appropriate the following sums in support of the Bristol-based organizations listed below, with said amounts level funded or lowered from the prior year pursuant to 24 VSA Section 2691? I'll read the organization and then the amount. Bristol Cemetery Association Incorporated, $29,000. Bristol Core, $10,000. Bristol Family Center, $4,000. Bristol Historical Society, $2,500. Bristol Little League Baseball and Softball, $2,000. Bristol Recreation Club, $15,000. Bristol Rescue Squad, $13,500. Bristol Town Band, Go Band, I play trumpet, $1,200. Okay, okay. That was inappropriate. Neat Northeast Addison Television, $3,500. For a total of $80,700. Will someone please move Article 16? Thank you. Second? Seconds. Thank you very much. The first person who moved it, we need the name for the record again?
Russ Ruder.
Thank you very much. Did you catch that? Thank you. All right. Any discussion, comments, otherwise? Not, oh, yes, Mr. Sharp, please approach, unless you're calling a question, approach the microphone or a point of order.
So this is probably a foolish question, but I'll ask it anyway. Why are these separate from the ones in Article 23?
That was my decision. I did that just for clarity of what were Bristol-based organizations. It hasn't been done that way in the past, but I felt that that might be clearer for people, for those particular organizations. If that is incorrect, please tell me, and I'm willing to change it next year.
I think it was last year. Didn't you do it last year too?
I did not. They were, they were together.
Were they?
Maybe they were.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, let's vote on Article 16. Will voters appropriate the following sums in support of the Bristol-based organizations listed below, with said amounts level funded or lowered from the prior year? All of the organizations and amounts I read before totaling $80,700. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article 16 passes. Article 17. Will the voters appropriate $8,500 to the Bristol Fourth of July Committee to organize the parade and events on the town green? Will someone please move Article 17? All right. Who was the second? Thank you very much. Discussion, questions, or comments on Article 17? Hearing none, let's go on to the vote. Will the voters approve $8,500 for the Bristol Fourth of July Committee to organize the parade and events at the town green? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 17 passes. Article 18. Will the voters appropriate $6,000 to the Have a Heart Food Shelf for providing food and essential items free of charge to any person living in the five-town area of Addison County? That includes Bristol, Lincoln, Moncton, New Haven, and Starksborough. Will someone please move Article 18? Thank you. And second? Thank you. Discussion, comments, or questions on Article 18? Please approach the microphone and introduce yourself yet again.
Dave Sharp. So my understanding, and correct me, please, if I'm wrong, is that Article 17 through 22 are worded the way they are because they're either new or increased amounts over the ones that are in Article 16 and Article 23, which are carryover, they're the same amounts as they were last year.
That is correct. 17 through 22, or 23 are an increase or a new article. That's why 16 says level funded or lower.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion on Article 18?
Is there anybody here from the Have a Heart? I just, I just have a quick question. Are you guys, are you guys asking money from every town for Have a Heart?
Thank you. If you could please approach the microphone and state your name. Thank you.
I'm Allison Pouliaud. I'm the treasurer of the Have a Heart Food Shelf, and the answer to that is no. It was an oversight. We are now tracking, we had to change our model for the food shelf. We're now tracking where the people come from.
Okay.
We have like a two-month, we have data for like two months. About 62% of the people who come to the food shelf are from Bristol. It's our intention to track that for the remainder of this year, and then to go to each of the other towns as well next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions or discussion? Yes, please stand up and approach the microphone and state your name.
Hi, Krista Saringo from Bristol first. So appreciate what you guys do at the food shelf. Just wondering if anyone can tell us about changes in participation over the past year?
I'm Allison Pouliaud again. I came armed with data. So we have data from pre-pandemic and then post-pandemic. For 2021, I'm just going to take a couple, I'm going to take January and February, just the most recent data that we have. So January of '21, we served, let me take my glasses off so you can see, 53 families, 114 individuals. January of 2022, 78 families, 185 individuals. And January of 2023, 93 families, 294 individuals. So our attendance at food shelf distributions has almost, has more than doubled since the pandemic.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Saringo, please stand up and repeat your name.
Hi, Krista Saringo again. Thanks for that. I just think it's important for us to recognize that in light of all the other spending we're approving, that folks are really struggling.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, let's vote on Article 18. Will the voters appropriate $6,000 to the Have a Heart Food Shelf for providing food and essential items free of charge to any person living in the five-town area of Addison County? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 18 passes. Article 19. Will the voters appropriate $750 to the Addison Allies Network Incorporated for migrant farm workers living in Addison County? Will anyone move this article for consideration? Name? Thank you very much. Second?
Second, Russ Ruder.
Thank you very much. Any discussion, comments, or questions on Article 19?
Robert Sickema. I'm questioning why we have this tiny amount for a very large presence in our community. I'd like to know what the little amount of money is going to accomplish.
Thank you. Is anybody here from the Addison Allies Network who, or knows and might be able to answer?
Hi, I'm Carol Price. I'm sorry, I didn't completely understand your question. Can you repeat it again?
Why such a tiny amount for such a large presence in our community?
Oh, I like that question. Well, there are something like 26 towns that we're going to be trying to get money from. You know, we started small so that we didn't get too much attention and scare people. I think that was it. This is the second year it will be that we've been on the ballot, and it was approved last year. For those that don't know, Addison Allies, we provide a lot of support from the migrant workers in the area. Teaching English was a very common activity prior to COVID, and we hope to start resuming that again. We usually go into the homes of the farm workers in order to do that. Myself, I've been volunteering for the organization about five years, and I've provided a lot of rides for people to various doctor's appointments, to the pharmacy, to the grocery store, to get luggage to go home. That was a good one. And this year, one of the big expenses was we spent $13,000 buying muck boots for farm, farm workers throughout the area.
Any other questions, comment, or discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Article 19. Will the voters appropriate $750,000? While they're important, they're a big presence. Will the voters appropriate $750 to the Addison Allies Network Incorporated for migrant farm workers living in Addison County? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article 19 passes. Article 20. Will the voters appropriate $1,500 to the Addison County Restorative Justice Services Incorporated to provide restorative justice projects for offenders who have the potential to learn from their mistakes? Will someone move Article 20, please? Thank you. A second? Thank you very much. Article 20. Any questions, discussion, or comments? Hearing none, we will vote. Will the voters appropriate $1,500 for the Addison County Restorative Justice Services Incorporated? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article 20 passes. Article 21. Will the voters appropriate $1,500 to Habitat for Humanity Addison County to build affordable, energy-efficient, and sustainable homes for eligible families? Will someone move this article? And second? Thank you. Ann Wallace. The discussion, comments, or questions on Article 21? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Will the voters appropriate $1,500 to Habitat for Humanity Addison County to build affordable, energy-efficient, and sustainable homes for eligible families? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Article 21 passes. Article 22. Will the voters appropriate $3,000 to Turning Point Center of Addison County to support its mission to assist persons, their families, and their friends in recovery from substance use disorder and addictive behaviors? Will someone move Article 22? Your name? Thank you. Second? Linda Andrews, seconds. Thank you. Any discussion, comments, or other on Article 22? Not hearing any, we'll move to a vote. Will the voters appropriate $3,000 to the Turning Point Center of Addison County? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Article 22 passes. The ayes have it. Article 23. Will the voters appropriate the following sums in support of the organizations listed below with the said, with the said amounts level funded or lowered from the prior year pursuant to 24 VSA Section 2691? Organization, I will read first, followed by the amount. Organization, Addison County Home Health and Hospice, 4,700. Addison County Parent Child Center, 4,800. Addison County Readers Incorporated, 2,000. Addison County River Watch Collective, 300. Age Well, 2,700. Counseling Service of Addison County, $3,875. Elderly Services, 2,200. Homeward Bound, 1,000. Hope, 3,250. John W. Graham Housing and Services, 1,400. Open Door Clinic, 1,000. RSVP and Green Mountain Foster Grandparent Program, $750. Tri Valley Transit, $11,306. Vermont Adult Learning, $1,650. And Women's Aid, $3,500. For a total of $44,431. Will someone move Article 23? Ann Wallace moves. Is there a second? All right, we have a second. Did you catch the second? Can you say your name louder for Sharon?
Ted.
Ted. Ted Lillis. Thank you very much. Any questions, comment, or discussion on any of the organizations or anything about Article 23? It's not even nine o'clock. You all want to go home early? All right. Not hearing anything, I'm going to go ahead and move to a vote on Article 23. Will the voters appropriate the sums that I listed to those organizations in a total amount of $44,431? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it. Article 23 passes. And that brings us to Article 24. We have concluded the portion of this meeting where we vote on articles. Article 24 is your opportunity to bring any new business to the town. We will not be voting on it tonight, but you can bring it to the attention of your fellow town members, those who are participating on Zoom, and the select board, or anything else you want to discuss. Please wait to be recognized. Up front? Yes.
Katie Raycroft Meyer. I would like to make a pitch for participation in Addison County Regional Planning Commission members. members. Each member, I, I am a staff member at Addison County Regional Planning Commission, but there is a planning commission for the region, which is the county minus two towns. And every town has membership. And Bristol is actually, can have three delegates and three alternates. At this time, we have one delegate and one alternate. And Bristol is very underrepresented on the regional planning commission. And I think that's a shame because there are a lot of really good opportunities and just, just outreach, just knowledge, just, there's a lot of resources that we can share, a lot of information. And also just, you know, being with your, you know, your neighboring towns and learning from other communities. As everybody knows, there's a lot of money in the state and people are trying to figure out how to spend it and it, there's a lot of possibilities there. So I would like to see my neighbors on, on the commission. So, whoops. Come join us, not me.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes? Well, I?
Yep, thank you.
Robert Bernstein. I'd just like to recognize the return to health of select board member Joel Bouvier. Joel's quite a character.
Thank you.
And it's good to see you doing well, Joel.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And I thank you for all of you and yeah, I really shouldn't be here. My heart stopped six times on the 15th of December, but thank you. I heard all your prayers. Thank you. This is not just a wonderful town, it's a great town to live in. I do have to tell a little quick story if you've got a minute. I was going to tell it, David, when we were talking about the tax collector. My former wife's uncle, George Smith, who we all dear and loved when he went to the landfill on Saturdays. There was a business here in town that's no longer here. They went bankrupt. I don't know what happened to him, but they were from out of state and they owed George tax money. You don't owe, you don't owe George Smith money without paying it. And they kept kiting checks on him and he, they'd write him a check and then anytime he'd get it, it would close the account. Well, he went over one day to get the check and they wrote him a check and it was a sizable check, I think 20,000 dollars in taxes, drawn on a bank in North Adams, Massachusetts. George called that bank that afternoon and they said, yep, the funds are there. And he took the money from the check from that business. He got up at five o'clock that morning and drove to North Adams, Massachusetts. At five minutes to nine, George was at that bank waiting at the door to open. George went in, took the check, said I'd like to cash this for a cashier's check, made out to the town of Bristol. That business called at quarter after nine. They wanted to close that account or transfer that money. And they go, sorry, that gentleman's already been here and cashed that check. Is that dedication or what? God rest your soul, George.
Anything else? Anybody?
David, he got that 4%. He got eight then, he got eight then, yes.
Yes, Mr. Bernstein, anyone? Go ahead.
We're going to tell stories here now, Robert. Storytime, we're going to tell stories here.
Well, George Smith was delinquent tax collector and I forgot to send, I think we were doing it only once a year for the tax at that time and it was 8%. And I realized the day after taxes that I hadn't paid. George hadn't done anything yet, so I called him up and I said, George, I forgot, I'm bringing it right over. He said, no, you're not. And I said, George, you're going to charge me 100 dollars for being a day late. And he said, yes, I am and that'll help you remember.
That's your incentive.
And he was right.
That's your incentive.
Any other delinquent tax stories?
My goodie.
We, we do have a comment from the chat. William Turner says, please open the town offices on Fridays again. Townspeople should have the ability to conduct, conduct business in person on Fridays. We have personnel there, the doors should be open. My work schedule is off Friday and Saturday, so getting to the offices Monday through Thursday is hard.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, then we are officially adjourned. Remember, come tomorrow and vote at the polls. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for coming this evening, everyone.